Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and council. Tonight is April 10th, 2024 at 6:01 PM, and I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Would someone like to make the motion?
I can make the motion, but I actually am curi-- I need a clarification on the letter of support to the city of Ramsey because I thought that that bill was dead.
That came as an email yesterday, so I don't know the status of HF4009. It's a company and senate bill.
Mr. Mayor and council, I also heard that it was dead, but things have a, you know, strange way of popping up.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think there's any harm being on the record. On the other hand, we can, we can continue to track it. We're, you know, we're tracking it through the legislative process anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if you want to keep your powder dry and, and, you know, wait till next session or wait till it, to see if it comes up again.
Well, I think if the, if the bill is dead, it doesn't make any sense to send that letter. The letter was long and rambling. I don't think it was a very good letter anyway. I mean, I, I-
I would agree.
I agree with the premise, but I should, I mean, if we don't need to make a point of it, I wouldn't want to sign onto that letter.
So how dead is it, counselor? You said it comes back.
It's, uh, as they say in the movie Princess Bride, it's mostly dead. So I, I, I think that's the right, I mean, I would agree with that position. If we were to send a letter, we'd want it something that's more tightly written. I think it was given as an example, but I think that we can continue to monitor the bill as we have been doing.
All right, so we have a motion accepting that. Correct, Jenna?
Um, well-
You don't need to take any action.
Yeah, so I would just move to approve the agenda. It's not on this agenda, right? We were gonna add it?
Well, it wa- isn't it-
It's on there.
D5?
It would be a request to add it if you want to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Maybe just say excluding that.
So I'll just move to adopt the agenda as written.
This is Sue. I'll second.
We'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Letter B, consent agenda.
So I'm gonna do that one because I reviewed the minutes and I would like us to pull the March 27th minutes because there's some very substantial edits to it, but I would approve consent agenda one and three.
I'll second that. Any discussion or questions? We'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Is there anyone online or in the chambers who would like to speak at the public open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to the, oops, we have Sean Lazard. Is he gonna present?
Sean is ill and will not be able to present the report. I would recommend that we table this until the next meeting.
All right.
Okay, good, because I did have some questions on that, so.
I can answer most of them generally, but he'll be able to go into detail with them.
Yeah, we can wait.
Number three, special meeting date cancellation, pages 13 and 14 in our packet.
This is a call for the special meeting that we discussed at our last council meeting. The special meeting was called for September the 30th, no, excuse me, April the 30th, 2024, and this conflicts with the date of our local Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting. So I'm gonna make a recommendation that city council consider canceling the special meeting called for the 30th, and we'll reschedule that at a later date, and there may be some comments that councilperson Hagler would like to make after we act on this.
So the, this is the special meeting for the discussion on the finalist candidates for the, our permanent city administrator. So we did talk, the Personnel Committee talked and thought potentially we could do it on the May 8th, regular council meeting. So we, we would request to do that at this time with the option of in two weeks. If we feel like we need more time, then we will push it out a little more. If that's okay.
And we, we can call the special meeting at any time with three days' notice, so that's, that's not a problem. But we do need to go ahead and cancel the one that we did call for, which is the April 30th meeting.
Correct.
And then we can go from there on when the next one's gonna be held.
Do we need a motion to cancel?
Yes.
And I can do that.
Janet made the motion to approve the calling, so I would recommend that she makes the motion to cancel.
So, so I will move to approve the cancellation of the April 30th, 2024 special city council meeting due to a conflict with the local Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting scheduled for the same date, um, originally in the motion was-
I guess it's a note.
Yeah.
Second, Rob. Any other questions or discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Do we need a motion to, to just move the agenda item, the item that we had planned to discuss on the 30th and have you put it on the agenda for the, the regular meeting on May 8th, or?
If it's a regular meeting, we don't need to do that. We'll just put that as part of the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you.
Item number four, the EDA special meeting schedule changes, pages 15 to 20.
The schedule for the 2024 EDA meetings was approved by city council at their December 13th, 2023 meeting. The EDA regular meetings are currently scheduled on the day of and one hour prior to council meetings on April 10th, August 14th, and November 14th, 2024. EDA workshop meetings are scheduled on May 14th, September 10th, and December 10th, 2024, and run concurrent with city council workshop meetings. As EDA meetings are trending to be longer than time allowed them, council meetings have been and can be delayed beyond their scheduled start times, and items on the EDA agendas may not receive the time required to address them. To avoid this conflict, along with the restricted meeting time, it is recommended that city council move the EDA workshop and regular meetings to Thursday, August 22nd, and November 21st, 2024, and start these at 5:30 PM. And the April 10th EDA regular meeting, which was canceled, be scheduled for May 14th, 2024, along with the EDA workshop meeting at the same time. The workshop meeting will be the first on the agenda, and the regular meeting will begin upon the adjournment of the work meeting. The proposed date changes do not fall in weeks in which more than one city council meeting is scheduled. Pending approval of the request for the meeting date change, the new schedule will be published in the Forest Lake Times and revised on the city website. Staff is requesting city council approve these meeting dates for the EDA as exhibited in your calendar and your packet.
And just to clarify, and thank you for doing that, I did look through and I already added all these to my calendar, and I was free the, all of those Thursdays, so that works. But you did mention May 14th, but it's May 16th is the one that, the April 10th one was canceled, and then we were gonna reschedule for May-
That's correct. We're, we're changing that to, it's on May 16th. Both of them will be on May 16th.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions or?
I have one question. Do we need to set a beginning time for the regular EDA meeting for the purposes of the public if they wanted to attend? So there'll be a workshop meeting that starts at 5:30, I think is what you said, but then does there need to be a, a time set for the EDA meeting too? We just can't let the two run together, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think the time would be very dependent on how long the workshop meeting takes, so it could be a TBA, but we could give a range to give a specific time unless we just want to cut the workshop meeting off at a certain time. It's however we want to handle that.
Mr. Mayor and council, I would recommend that you have a, a certain time for both meetings. They can run a little long, and then you just give the public notice of that. The requirement is that, that it's a time certain, so.
So with that, I would recommend that we have the regular EDA meetings and start at 6:30. The workshops start at 5:30, and as our city attorney stated, if the workshop meeting runs a little long, it can be so noted.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Would someone like to make the motion?
I move to approve the change of the EDA regular and workshop meeting dates to May 16th, August 22nd, and November 21st, 2024, at 5:30 PM, and publish this scheduled change in the Forest Lake Times and on the city website.
Do we want to add in 6:30 PM? So be 5:30 with, for the workshop and 6:30 for the EDA?
Yep, 6:30 PM for the EDA meeting.
Second that. Any other questions or discussions? We'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Staff and consultants reports. City engineer Kevin.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council members. Kevin Bittner, city engineer. Last week, the state came out with their announcements for the LRIP grants. We did apply, as you recall, for our remaining segment of Hornsby, North Hornsby Street, up to the Forest Lake city limits. That application was not successful, and in looking at the awards, it's pretty obvious that they do try to distribute those funds throughout the state. And also, if you look at the amount of the awards, Anoka County had a couple projects in there that were legislatively selected in last year's session that amounted to $35 million worth of award on the Highway 65 project. There weren't any other Anoka County projects on the list, so I suspect that they said Anoka County has got their share, so we'll have to rely on Bill to try to get an award for us here in this legislative session if, if that's successful. So anyways, that's that report. Street maintenance contracts, the mayor's probably, hand is probably cramping up signing our contracts that we have for chip sealing, crack sealing, and micro-surfacing. Jim and I are trying to get precons set up for that so that we can get those projects scheduled this summer, spring and summer. Also, the Brown Beagle project down in south West Freeway Drive, they're, they're putting in footings and, and starting that work on the buildings. I've been told that their work on our public utilities, sanitary sewer and water is gonna start sometime in early May, so that project will be, is underway, and, and the public side will be getting underway probably sometime in May as well, so that's my report.
I just have a quick question. Were they able to start early because of the winter that we had? I mean, is the frost out and they were?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty obvious that that was very beneficial for them getting in and doing footing work. You know, I think probably a year ago, we were, we still had frozen, frozen lakes and probably still frost in the ground, but not so this year, so.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Kevin. City engineer report.
Um, that was a city engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry. City attorney.
Thank you. We're pretty much in.
Or whoever you are.
Yeah, whoever you are.
Mayor, could I just add a couple of questions that spilled over for the engineer from last night? On that, on that pump hose repairs, have we got bids back yet?
Oh yeah, that was another item I was gonna mention too, yep. So we are soliciting a couple bids on that project since it's under the threshold that we need to do sealed bids. We, we requested bids from a couple different wellhouse contractors, the one Rice Lake who, who actually built the building and did the temporary repair, and also Magny Construction. We've, we've requested bids from both of those companies, so I expect to get those back probably sometime next week, so.
Okay, and then, thank you so much for that. And then the other was on the presentation from last night with the water tower and us talking about doing some changes with, with the water systems of that, and maybe it's, maybe it's for Bill or, or Kevin, but curious if there's funds out there with the DNR, being if there was wildfires, they'd be pumping that water. Columbus is the closest spot that Carlos Avery has to get water. Is there any?
Mr. Mayor and council, I don't, I don't have a quick answer, but it would behoove us to look for funding sources. I, I don't know if Kevin has the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not aware of any funding source from the DNR for those types of projects. The one source that we talked about was the Department of Health, and that's related to the magnet, manganese levels in the water, which actually the Department of Health representative was out today to draw a sample to get those tested from all the wells, and he'll be back again in two weeks to draw samples again to test for manganese, to try to get confirmation samples. So he'll probably hear the results of those, and, and he said their lab was pretty well backed up, so we'll have to, it'll be at least a couple of weeks before we get the first set of samples test back, so. We, we've done our own testing, but to be eligible for, if we were to go a treatment plant route, which obviously you, you don't have to decide that yet, or, but it has to be a test that's pulled by the Department of Health in order to be eligible for that grant, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'll address this in my report, but sitting through a couple of the bonding hearings, the, you know, you see the usual suspects, the larger suburbs, the bigger cities, they have two or three or four bonding requests every year. They do make a point about regional impact, so when they're kind of setting the stage for their request, they'll identify something that has a regional impact, and I think the water system, because Carlos Avery is a regional facility, and it has gone up, there have been fires there in the past, I think there is something to that point, that if we, if we want to, you know, as this progresses, if we want to look at a bonding request, we can identify the fire saving capabilities for regional facilities like the racetrack, like Carlos Avery, because that's kind of the, the method to the madness as we see others present. Well, this, this has a regional impact, so therefore we're, you know, we're putting up this much as a local investment, and we're putting up, we're requesting the state, you know, provide some sort of match. So we can strategize a little bit with the city engineer on that as this moves forward.
Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, I have a couple of items under the city attorney. One is the legislative update. The mayor did a fine job. He spent a lot of time with the Capitol the last couple of days, and we had him running between two floors, so, well, he had himself running between two floors. We were just helping him get there. First was the Capital Investment Committee in the House. We met with Representative Nolan West before that testimony, just to make sure, we kind of knew what he was gonna say and what we were gonna say, and he did a nice job introducing the project. He also indicated, he started his testimony by saying, "We're one of those cities that doesn't get any state money," which was maybe a little bit of an overstatement, but it's pretty close, and kind of like, "We're never up asking for anything." And that, that was a good way to start because, as you know, we, we don't get municipal street money, we don't get, we don't get state aid, local government state aid, and we don't, and we contribute to fiscal disparity, so you, you all know that storyline. But he did a nice job of introducing the mayor. The mayor was very succinct. We had a couple of boards ready to show people, answer questions about where the project is, and, and there wasn't any interest. We were the second to last bill on a long list of bills, so we didn't, we didn't use, sorry Kevin, his office scrambled to put those together.
Better be ready than not.
We, we have them for the senate, so the next thing to happen will, will be a hearing, similar hearing in the senate capital bonding committee, and then also we would like to get a hearing on our fiscal disparities bill. So things are moving. Go ahead.
No, I just said nice.
Oh, nice, okay.
Slipped out.
Margaret, I talked to Margaret just before the, the meeting, just to make sure I was up to date. She said there are 18 days left on the calendar, so it's, it's gonna be a scramble, and because they only have 18 days left, they may actually adjourn early this year because they don't have enough days to get them all the way to the 20th of May, so we'll see. That is the legislative update. Any questions on those matters? Then I was also asked to just give a quick summary on remote meetings. The, the law did change in the last year, so I think it's a good topic to bring up in terms of open meeting law and council attendance at meetings. There's a clear preference for in-person attendance whenever possible. If you can't attend and would like to attend, if you can't attend in person and would like to attend remotely, we should be providing the public a notice, because the first preference is that you attend in a location that is open and accessible to the public. So what would that mean? Let's say you're at a conference downtown. You'd find a location ahead of time, you'd scope it out, you'd say, "Okay, the public can get here, whether it's the government center or a convention center, a place that's generally open and accessible to the public." It's an odd requirement that goes back many, many years because the, the preference is always that the, that because of open meeting law requirements, that the public can kind of watch and see each member participate. That law was updated because of the pandemic, and, and so an exception to that, if you cannot be in an open and accessible location, up to three times a year, you can participate remotely from a, call it a private location or a location that's not open and accessible, and this is, this is the catch. Either because you're serving in the military or because you've gotten doctors', healthcare professionals' advice that you shouldn't be in an open and accessible location. So maybe you've come down with COVID or, and you still want to participate. So we, we actually saw that happen, right, during the, the pandemic? And, and in all cases, the minutes need to reflect the reason for the remote participation, and, and that's so the public can know, you know, "Okay, has someone done four of these? And were they following process?" I can tell you, I was just in another meeting in a fairly large suburb where two members participated from a convention spot. I don't know that it was open and accessible to the public, and I know that some communities are actually asking for more flexibility, so there's bills that have been introduced for more flexibility. So until such time as we have more flexibility, I'm just gonna recap the requirements. We need to provide a notice to the public, so that would require that you check in with Jack when you, when you can't participate in person. Best, you know, best case, you find a place that's open and accessible to the public, and that's provided in the notice. If you can't do that, you better have a doctor's note, you know, because you, you need to be ill. I don't know that you need a doctor's note, but it should be, you know, based on healthcare advice, you know, you've, you've come down with COVID or something similar, and then the minute should reflect the reason for not attending remotely. So if you can follow that, then we're gonna be in the four square corners of the law, and if not, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be outside of the requirements.
My question is, does it only apply to the city council meetings, or is it also apply to like the planning commission and, um, workshops?
It applies to, to all the public meetings.
All of them, okay.
Yep, so anybody who's appointed or elected. I think some of the ad hoc meetings that we have, probably not, you know, where it's kind of a blend of staff and council, or certainly Personnel Committee would not fall under that requirement, nor would-
Fall faster.
Fall faster, right.
But, but workshops do.
Workshops do as well, so.
That's a lot of those.
Yeah, I think it's, it's always timely to bring this stuff back to the council from time to time because we want to make sure we're, the, the thing that we are clearly doing is providing the information for interactive participation by the public, and so, and taking the votes as you do by roll call is helpful because then the public is able to monitor the council meetings from all locations we've had, you know, developers participate by interactive means, so all that's good, but just, just a reminder.
I remember, and I don't know what the current rule is, or even if there is a rule, but at one point, I remember there being debate about whether you have to have your camera on or off. Does it say?
It doesn't say, but it implies on because they want to be able to have the public see you interact.
See, that's what I thought, that was what I remember from the prior discussion, but I don't, I, I just didn't know where they landed on that.
Yeah, it doesn't specifically say camera on, it says to allow the public to monitor your actions, so, you know, and occasionally somebody raises a hand or, you know, signals an affirmative nod, you know, it's preferable that you speak, but, you know, that way the public can see you nodding or whatever it is that you're, you're doing. So that is that matter unless there are questions. The next is, we've been, you know, working through the, the ISTS, you know, called the septic ordinance. A lot of questions have come up in, in the meantime, and so that was deferred on, on last night's workshop. We want to make sure we get a good, complete review of the ordinance, but we were asked to look at how, how we can streamline the approval process for these variances. What's happened traditionally is we've treated them like land use and zoning variances, and so they've gone to the planning commission, and they've gone for public hearing, and then they've gone to the council. That's not required by statute. That's a practice that was adopted here, I don't know how many years ago. We also have the ability in our code today, without amendment, to have variances approved administratively, and I think we've utilized that in, in many cases. That requires not only the billing official to sign off, but it requires consultation with our city administrator as kind of a check on the appropriateness of granting administrative variance. So we would like to, if, if the council so directs, we'd like to include and clarify that process in the ordinance update. And one of the things we should think about is when the default of doing administrative variance is referred to the council. We wouldn't, we wouldn't take them to the planning commission anymore, we wouldn't require public hearing because it's not, it's, it's a technical approval, and it's not something really the planning commission needs to weigh in on. So the, the two questions are, are you comfortable, there's a, the Darwin Smith matter, right? Are you comfortable with direction that staff look at and administrative approval on that one? And also, would you direct us to amend the code to provide for continuing not only administrative variances, but when they are referred to the council, that they are directly to the council without need for hearing and planning commission review?
I would say yes. This is the mayor. I agree with both of them. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I agree with both.
I do too. I think Nandool was stretched out too far.
That's been five years.
Five years?
Yes.
No, I'm talking about variants on the septic system, but it's, when did they apply for it? And it's still going on where it could be done.
Yeah, did that, did this kind of spur from that, that planning commission meeting? With the, with the sewer, with that stage two deal, or?
That, that was one of the reasons, and the other reason is, is something that I've brought up in places that I've been before.
Yeah.
That the planning commission generally just deals with land use and zoning regulations, and these septic variances have gotten to the point where they're very technical.
Yep.
And generally, they're gonna have to be reviewed by the inspector, sometimes the engineer has to come in, and asking the planning commission to rule on these where they don't relate to land use or zoning is probably asking them to do something that they may not be comfortable with, and we're probably gonna have to use these gentlemen anyway, and it extends the process by probably anywhere from three to six weeks.
Okay, and this, this is just in relation to the variance portion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I had recently, one of the local sewer companies brought forward the fact that there was a local entity, and Minspec was telling them that they had to get some test that's not pushed by the state of Minnesota, but Minspec's telling them they have to do this secondary testing. but Minspec's telling them they have to do this secondary testing and that Minspec is a secondary testing for the septic and that they needed to hire them to do this. Have you heard anything about that or has anyone else?
I haven't, I think that there was.
Think it was related to down the road here?
Yeah, and I have heard that. I haven't heard that Minspec required them to do the testing, but they can't require them to do that. They can't require them to do, use their own company to do that. They can get whoever they is qualified or certified to do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't tied in with that because it was a big concern, so, thank you.
No, I'm good, I'm good with it. I think, I mean, we had a bunch of variances for type three and now that were administratively handled. And now, I think you can just do them, right? I mean, you don't even need a variance for that. So, I think as time goes on, these things sort of become more accepted in common. So, I think that's, I think that's fine to handle them administratively. I think it's fine and actually really good to get it clarified in the ordinance.
Yep, good.
So, do we need a motion or a recommendation or what, Bill?
Nope, we've got your direction. Staff was looking for council direction on both topics. With that, we'll, you'll be able to pass on the language when you see the updated ordinance come back to you. We're also looking at whether there's some guidance, maybe guidance, maybe standards that can help determine when a system is deemed failing.
Oh, thank God. I'm so glad. If you can get a definition for that, I will be so happy.
We're looking at that. Generally, what we like to do is pull from either state guidance or kind of industry standards. And so, that's what we're really looking for. Is there, is there good guidance on that? We might contact the city engineer, see if he's got some resources. But we want to, we want to come up with something, even if it's not written in the code, that it's adopted as policy so that, so that there's some guidance. So, both the homeowner and the staff know what's expected.
So, just for your sake, Kevin, what the current definition is, is if it doesn't protect groundwater. But when they do the compliance checks, they don't actually, they don't test for that. So, then that's just like an inspector call based on nothing other than their opinion.
So, what's your question, I guess?
Question is, how do you better define a failing system? So, in Columbus, you have a lot of systems that were put in in the early nineties or before and there was a different rule that they had to follow for the, you know, separation of the soils. And so, now, if those, if those systems, that there was a compliance check on those systems for whatever reason, they're gonna expand their house or whatever, the inspector would say they're failing because they don't meet the current three-foot requirement. It's like, well, they did back when it was built. And if there, there's no test to see whether they're actually, I mean, it's clear if they're leaking or they're bubbling up to the surface or there's something like that. But I think saying that they don't meet the current standard when the standard has changed, but they did meet it back then when it was thought to be fine, I think that that's arbitrary. So, we've been trying to figure out if there's a better way to define that. And I think, you know, the inspector wants to be able to exercise their judgment. They don't want to be too specific and we've not landed on good, a good compromise on that.
Yeah, when Bill was looking at me for potential input on that, I would probably consult a couple other individuals in our company that are actually certified septic tank designers. There is a special certification for that and I don't have that. So, I'm probably not the most qualified to answer your question at this point, so.
I just wanted you to know where it was coming from because, I mean, we're looking for more specific. I think the default answer will be, you know, if it's failing, it doesn't meet the requirements. It's like, well, there should be a way, there should be a better test than just that. Doesn't protect groundwater, oh, gosh, that's pretty broad.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and what I was thinking was just that, that we would look to, what is the guidance that's given to someone who's a certified inspector? What are they taught to look for? Signs that it's failing, that there's, you know, effluent present, that, you know, what is it that they're told to look for in their certification? And maybe we'll find out that, you know, it isn't as neat as we think, but we're gonna certainly ask the question. And then, then the question for the council will be, all right, do we write that into code? Or do you adopt it as guidance, a policy that sits next to the code? So that there is some discretion, so it's not black and white in the code. So, it leaves some discretion, but it also provides guidance at the same time. That's probably the happy balance, but we'll see if we can get there.
So, Janet, just a question on that to try and help me understand. Are you talking about like when someone pulls a permit and then they have to have like a compliance inspection through their sewer?
Yeah.
Where they have to get some sort of either, hey, it's good, this mound system meets an extra room in the house? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
It kind of came up because of Mr. Smith's situation where he pulled a building permit. It wasn't, you know, our ordinance wasn't written specifically enough to say, well, if you're not adding on a bedroom or a kitchen or a bathroom, something that puts more pressure on the system.
Yeah.
So, according to our current ordinance, he had to have a compliance check. And his system was deemed to be failing because it was built back in the day and it didn't meet the soil separation. But there was no obvious failure.
Yeah, he wasn't adding extra rooms or?
No, and so, if our ordinance had been, I think the intent of the ordinance was not the way it was written. So, if it had been written the way the intent was, he wouldn't have even needed a compliance check. And there are so many, there are so many systems in Columbus that were built in that era that are functioning and not creating problems. As far as we know, we don't have any big outbreak of contaminated wells or things like that. I mean, so, so it raised the question. And I think since we're updating our ordinance in that, the septic ordinance, it's worth trying to get a better definition than what we have.
And it still states that if, say, someone's making a sale of a home that they need to replace.
The point of sale would still, yeah.
It would still trigger that, okay, good deal.
I got a question for you then. So, when somebody comes out to pump a tank, and I've had this happen before, that they can fail a system, can they?
Well, they're supposed to do an inspection. So, you know, they check to see that the baffles are, you know, still there and working and there's no big cracks. And, I mean, so, yes, they're supposed to do an inspection. And if they saw that the tank was cracked or the baffles weren't in place or whatever or there was clearly leakage, then I don't, then they would have to report that and that would be considered a failing system. There are those words in like the state and the county ordinance. If it's leaking, if there's, you know, damage to the, to the system, if there's effluent, you know, bubbling to the top, those are obviously all failed systems. But then, then the other one is if it fails to protect groundwater, well, that's pretty broad.
But I always, we get our septic systems pumped every three years.
Yep.
So, I mean, mine failed and it failed when I had it replaced, they told me. I mean, that, so how long have they been pumping it and it's been failing? And I didn't know it.
Are you saying whoever pumped it didn't catch that?
Well, I don't know if they, if they didn't catch it or whatever, but it's just the idea that are we putting responsibility on? What do they, other than pumping and letting the city know that we pumped it? Are they required to say, oh, I seen this?
Yeah, they're supposed, they're supposed to inspect it.
That's included in their pump report that they submit back to the city.
Well, I had a couple of them that pumped and they never, I remember I wanted to get credit for it, you know. So, I quit getting letters and they didn't even, they had to come down and get, pay the ten bucks to get to fill it out.
Yeah.
And I mean, I wonder a lot of that's going on.
You know, so I've talked to Carissa about this because she said, you know, she looked at my files. She goes, you don't have any pumping reports other than, and it's like, I have every single sheet of paper they've given me. And so, if they're not sending them to you, then they're collecting ten bucks for no reason. So, I'm bringing all my, I'm bringing all of my, my reports and she's gonna cross-reference it. And then, if that's the case, then she's gonna make some phone calls to those.
Well, I had, I had the same thing happen, but I mean, I, we didn't know it was failing until we tore it up. I said, this thing's been failing for years. I, yeah, what do you do? Don't stick your head down there.
No. Well, if you do, don't breathe.
Anything else, Bill? That's it, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, to your, to your question too, I mean, that's, this is one of the things that Sean's been tasked with too is to figure out how the city should be enforcing that part of our ordinance because we send out reminders, but, you know, we haven't really taken it upon ourselves to follow up to make sure that they actually get done. And I think that's what, I think you guys have had some conversations. So, I think he's working on that process.
Are there a lot of them, Jack, that people don't get it done?
There's probably more that don't get it done than do get it done.
Scary.
And that's what we had some initial conversations with, with Sean to see if there's a way that we can monitor that and make sure, if nothing else, that people are notified that your tank needs to be pumped, this is the third year. Or if it hadn't been pumped, we ran into one, we were looking back and it hadn't been pumped since 2014. It was the last inspection report we had. Now, the other thing we probably need to look at too is sometimes the pumpers don't always return their pumping reports. Most of them are pretty good about it, but it's an honor system thing. It's not something that they are, they're supposed to do it, but there's no mandatory requirement for them to do it.
Well, there should be because they're charging you for it. They're charging you ten bucks every time they come out and do it so that they file a report with the city. And so, if they're not filing that report, there's a problem there.
And then, that's where we need to develop our process for us to follow back up with the pumpers to make sure that they've supplied us with those reports after their pumpings are done.
Like you know, Janet, once you buy a new one, you get it pumped.
Well, you know, if for no other reason, pumping it every three years helps protect your system, I mean, they, they are not cheap to replace, so you should really take care of them.
All right. City council members report, Ron.
I only, the only thing I got to report is that Saturday I did stop in at Fix-It Clinic. And I, there was twenty-two people at ten-thirty when I was there and it opened at ten. And I seen, I never knew there was that many vacuum cleaners that broke down. But I seen everything, the vacuum cleaners to blenders and somebody had some clothes being sewed. And I noticed that one person was some Hugo. So, it's not just a Forest Lake thing, it's, they take anybody.
Well, Anoka County sent a car down, I think, to everybody in the county saying, the county Fix-It Clinic is here.
Yeah, I seen that.
But you're right, Hugo's Washington County.
I know, but I think, you know, talking to Lori, she was here and I was talking to her, and it seems like it's a state deal somehow. It's like, it's like this new, Washington County's building a new recycling place over by the library on sixty-one. Now, we can take our oil, fluorescent lights and all that over to there and we don't have to go to Blaine.
Oh, that's nice.
So, I mean, I gather they're all kind of tied in together. They take you wherever, wherever you're at.
Well, that's good.
Anyway, it looked pretty successful. It went to one o'clock, but.
What did you bring? Last year, last time you were trying to get your microwave light fixed.
I had the microwave in the back of the truck.
Still not.
But, you know, I thought about it, was so busy and I thought these other people had other issues. I'll just throw, you know.
So, you still have a dark microwave?
Did you leave it in our dumpster?
Huh?
Leaving our dumpster?
It's in the ditch. I wouldn't throw it in a ditch on a hundred and sixty-fifth though. Because I know that JW would have one of the guys picking it up, so.
Yep.
No, it was real successful, it was, looked really good. That's all I have.
No report.
I think I'm gonna talk a little bit later, we'll talk a little bit later about the Personnel Committee, but I just wanted to let everybody know, if you haven't looked at your emails, you all got the first Fall Fest announcement email. I sent it out unless it's still in my drafts folder, sometimes that happens, telling everyone who was involved last year that we are going to have our first meeting on the eighteenth and naming some of the new things that we're adding and inviting people to bring anybody, any friends or family that they think might be invited. And I have one question for you because I've never got a response from you. Are you gonna help?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Good, thanks.
What time is it on the eighteenth?
Six-thirty because there's a, not.
Forest Lake Cable Commission.
Thank you, Cable Commission meeting that ends at six. So, Paul usually comes to those meetings and Sue was coming and she's on it. So, we're gonna start at six-thirty in the community room.
May I interject? I went to Minar's, so I was coming back and I think where Kettle River and Howard Lake Drive meets. There was a sign that says craft and something sale.
That's at.
Crossroads Church.
Church, Crossroads. I don't know why they put them out, it's on the twentieth and they put them out a week ago.
But anyway, somebody should go lurch around there and see, maybe some of those people could be the people that come to our, our hand crafter section or whatever.
Well, and I know Lynn, Lynn has connections because she does crafts and she sells things. And so, she knows that, but I thought the same thing. And I also, I also sent a email to the pastor up there because after our Fall Fest last year, he emailed the city and said, hey, you know, we'd really like to be part of this. So, I sent him an email and invited him to the meeting on the eighteenth and said, if you can't make it, just give me a call and we can meet, you know, offline on it.
It may be a good way. You've got twenty or fifty people altogether. You can pick out the good stuff from the bad stuff and invite the good ones, get them to sign up and that could solve that whole problem.
Yeah, no, I think, I was, I was thinking the same thing, good idea.
All right, sorry.
But I'm, that's all I have.
All right.
No report, Mayor.
The only thing I can, I'll have a little bit of a report. So, I was at the Capitol for two days, goodness sakes. So, I have to tell everyone, Bill and his team couldn't have made it easier. I mean, once I got to St. Paul, they took over this building, that building, upstairs, downstairs. We had the papers, we had the speeches, we had the photograph or the boards and all of that. So, thank you, Bill. It was, and then I went one day with somebody else and it wasn't the same experience. So, anyway, there's a difference and it couldn't have been any easier, so, thank you.
Thanks for going.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you really get your steps in, I'll tell you.
Public Works, Jim.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Interim City Administration Report.
I want to remind everybody that on September the thirtieth at six o'clock, the Local Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting is held here at City Hall. If there's anyone that wants to appeal their tax valuation or their tax classification, this is where you come to do it. It's the only meeting we have each year to consider these appeals. And if you missed that, you can go to the county. The county does like for you to come here first to try to get it worked out. If you're having questions about your tax valuations on your tax statements, the first and best thing to do is call the county assessor, let them know your problem. They'll try to work something out with you. But if you can't get anything resolved with them, then plan on coming to the meeting and present your case before the council who will be acting as that board and they can make adjustments as necessary to what your problems are if you can justify your case. So, please don't forget that meeting because it's the only one we have every year and it's your only chance to do it here in Columbus.
And Jack, that's Monday, the thirtieth, September?
It's Thursday, the thirtieth, I believe.
April thirtieth.
April.
April thirtieth.
I'm hooked on September.
That's because you're thinking Fall Fest.
Yeah, you did say September, huh?
I know.
So, it's April the thirtieth, I apologize.
All right, no problem.
It's on your list of meetings, announcements and reminders.
And the only other thing I have is there's gonna be a groundbreaking on Thursday, April the eighteenth at the Anoka County Highway Department's Coon Lake Shop for their new maintenance and park building. It's at two-thirty PM and anybody that wants to go to that, it's open to the public.
Could be a big day for you, Sue, you could go to three different meetings, three different things.
There's one other thing we should put out there, what Kevin said. And I think you put it down, that next Monday night is Forest Lake deal.
Oh, the Eureka.
Eureka Street.
Four-thirty to six-thirty.
At the open house.
They'll probably have cookies.
Oh, for sure.
So what are they doing on the street that goes to Menards? It was half shut down.
Everton.
They're ma, they're moving Menards exit down the road, down Everton to, I don't know how far, but I think it's going right where Keys is, that, that you go up there to Taco John. This is supposed to solve the problems at the stoplight. But I don't, I don't know. I just heard that a long time ago that they were going to make a new exit out of Wendy's and.
Straight across.
Yeah, I think if you Google the street, there was like a whole deal because they said it was closing. So I had Rochelle, we were in the car, I said, hey, will you look into that? And it, there is like a paragraph online about what they're doing. There was part of a county project.
I think there's some utility work being done too because that further down, they were, they were looking like they were doing utility type stuff.
All right. And Personnel Committee report.
You want to do it or you want me to?
Oh, I wasn't planning on giving one.
I, it's not really much of a report. It's more just of an update. So, um, we are coming down the home stretch, you guys. We have the semifinalists that will be, um, interviewed on the 14th and 15th of April, virtually by Ellen. And what I handed out before the meeting was just sort of all the, all the tasks that are left to do in this process. Um, so we, we scheduled the special meeting. It's not really a special meeting anymore, but we're going to be shooting for the May 8th to select the finalists. We have interview questions drafted for those. I, we're just kind of waiting that, for Ellen to get back so that she can weigh in on them. Um, you will get, as I said last night, you will get a link to a folder on the city's OneDrive and that's where all the information that you will need to evaluate the semifinalists will be. Um, and then we will select the finalists. And then there's a whole bunch of stuff that happens afterwards, which, um, we're going to have to talk about at our next Personnel Committee meeting to kind of get a sense of how long these things take. But I'm thinking that it's probably going to be maybe early June or so, or mid-June. By the time we get through all these things, that we'll actually be ready to select the, the lucky winner. So just hadn't really talked so much about what, where we were at and, and sort of when the end of this is going to happen, but that's my best guess.
Um, I was going to mention if, um, I know we were, you said about the OneDrive that everything is going to be on. Can we give them the OneDrive before the interview so they can start looking through the resumes?
That's, I, we certainly can. I guess the question is whether or not you want to do that. Because I don't know, I find it easiest to go and look at everything when I'm thinking about. If I were to look at the application and all that stuff now and then a week and a half from now, start looking, I, I'd forget it. But if you guys want it, I certainly can give it to you.
I like to read everything through first, one time, and then go back and then do it slower. So I, I just kind of get it. That's just how I do it. So I don't know, everybody's different.
Yep. It's, I, I mean, it.
And time wise too. I mean, if people don't, you know, we want, we're going to crunch that time and there's going to be a lot of stuff to go through.
There'll be at least six hours of interviews to watch. So it, it's not going to be something you're going to be able to do an hour before the meeting. But, but, you know, the, the folders are set up. I moved all of the application materials into those folders. So they're, that's there now. What will be added is the video, um, audio/video of the interviews and the results of the, um, personality styles assessment and then a summary sort of, um, of impressions from, from Ellen. So those will be the three things that'll get added to that once they're, they're done.
I was think, the other reason I was thinking that is some of the, um, I don't know if anybody is technically challenged and could have an issue with getting on, getting onto the OneDrive, getting it to work, you know, maybe having issues and getting those resolved. So they have plenty of time. Just looking out for everybody.
So this is a similar OneDrive to where you get a, you know, you open a tab and then you can click on the links on top bars?
No. So what you'll get from me is a email that says, you know, here's a link to the folder, City Administrator Semifinalists. And you'll click at the link and then I have, and it will be your council email address that will be tied to it. And then it, the, the problem that we had when you and I were doing it with the application is.
Oh, we started in Google Drive or something?
Well, no, we, we, I, I did it in OneDrive, but when, when it was asking for, for me to approve it, it was going to the spam folder.
Oh.
That's why you kept saying you're supposed to approve it. And it's like, I can't find it anywhere.
Oh, gotcha.
So now I know to look in the spam folder. So I end up approving it and then you, you have access to it.
Okay.
And so it's.
It looks like folders. So when you click that, it's going to be this way, look like little manila folders and they'll be labeled.
Will be able to access it on an iPad?
You should be able to access it on the iPad.
Sure.
Yes. I, I, well, actually, I take that back. Check and see if you have OneDrive on your iPad.
Okay.
If not, you might need to download it and you might need to get Phil or whoever to, because it'll be the city's license. I know that on my Outlook, um, on my desktop, I, there's a, that's, there's a OneDrive app. And if you assign it to the city, you, that, that's one easy way to get to it. You just click on that, on that little OneDrive app and it'll bring you right there.
So if you have an issue, who do we call? Ghostbusters?
Yes.
Who do we call?
I can help you with it, Ron. I had to figure it out myself. I know that Jesse has a technical support person at home that can help him. I'm sure you know how to do this, so.
I don't have any 13-year-olds around the house anymore.
Shoot, they're soft Andy.
If, if you want, we could schedule Phil in here for a specific date.
Yeah.
One morning or a time that's convenient for anybody and have him help them walk through that process too.
You really don't, you really don't want this all on paper because it will be a lot of paper. I mean, I like paper, but I wouldn't have wanted all that stuff in paper. I did it all online.
All right. Anything else, anyone, before we adjourn? Your announcements and reminders on the back page. There's a whole bunch of them. And they're all for April and a couple for May. And if there's nothing else, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
I'll second that.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, I?
Sue, I?
Janet, I?
Jessica, I?
Our meeting is adjourned for this evening. Thank everyone who attended. Thank you, everyone who attended.